Call this meeting to order. What allegiance? I call this order the Quincy School District Board of Directors to order. We already said the pledge of allegiance. Everybody received a copy of tonight's agenda? Right, or any proposed changes or amendments before we continue? If that is no belief. First, we have a public comment. Excuse me. I mean to adopt the agenda. Thank you, sorry.
I second that.
Who was the second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Alright, and then we're on to public comment and Carol Van Dyk. Carol, if you'll mind, let me move through my comment here for you. The next, I don't want our attendance public comment, each speaker will have three minutes and the board will welcome public input. We ask that you model your behavior after what we hope to see in our students. We encourage speakers to consider their words carefully and refrain from personal directed discriminatory abusive or obscene language or complaints regarding any individual staff member or student. President may interrupt or terminate speakers at any time after the allotted three minutes have expired or if student privacy is violated. Public comment period is not a time to dialogue between the board and public to align at the overall public meetings act. The board will not respond to statements, questions, or changes or challenge is made during public comment period and there will be no back and forth dialogue. Please know that the board's silence is neutral and signifies that we are listening faithfully. Go ahead, Carol, thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm Carol Van Dyk and this evening I just want to say a big thank you to the board members for your, for the time you put in to fulfill your position. I recognize there are many hours involved and let's face it, you're not doing it for the money. Last meeting was a prime example of your due diligence. So, I, yes. It is refreshing to see the board each meeting scouring over the expenses line by line. This is necessary so our district doesn't end up having the plight of other districts around us. As someone who pays mega taxes, I am glad there's someone watching over our, our taxes. I know this is tedious, but keep up the good work. We appreciate that in January, the board sent a letter to the WIAA firmly stating the need for our female athletes to be protected from biological males when competing. We realize the legislature and top officials of the state make this very difficult. In fact, in my humble opinion, if they'd stay home for two years, we'd probably be better off. Please, please continue to take a firm stand. Finally, it is also refreshing to see the board scrutinize the policies and contracts when they come up for review. The language is so important in those. An excellent job is being done in paying attention to detail and trying to understand the policies. Again, a sincere thank you.
Thank you. Next on my agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes routine matters that can be approved in one motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Alright, we'll move in a second. All in favor say aye.
I have discussions.
Sorry, sorry, I forgot. It's alright.
A question for Tia on the budget status report for February. Just looking for clarification, there was a reduction of about $2 million on fund balance. Expenses outweighed revenue, just looking for some clarification on what that, what that entails and what that looks like going forward for the rest of the year.
So, this, this time of year, we have not received our property taxes or our levy taxes from the state. We won't receive that till April. There's about four and a half million dollars that we haven't received on that. And unlike most of the payments we receive for school revenue, they're, those are spread out kind of equally, somewhat equally throughout the year. But levies, we get only twice, levy and bonds, we only get twice a year. So, there's kind of a cyclical drop between January and April and then it, the revenue shoots back up because of the levy.
In case you see that balance, there's a whole million dollars still left to be collected.
Correct.
So that will correct that, that two million.
Awesome.
That it?
Yeah, there, I just wanted to note the booster donation and thank the boosters for that donation for the, that's pretty awesome. Yes, it's good to thank. Kayla's here.
Hi, hi, Kimberly.
Kayla sent in the, Victor sent in a letter to us acknowledging that they donated a formula worth of $6,000. Thank you for coming. We just wanted to tell you thank you in person.
Thank you. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any idea what they're handing you in the formula? What do you got?
Yes, I can speak to it now or I can speak to it when I'm on.
If anyone, we can wait just a second for you. Any other questions?
I had one on personnel report. Now we're down six more pairs. What position does that put us in and what can we do?
I don't know if that puts us down six more pairs. We do have some that are resigned with. I can get the exact number that we have open. I think for the most part, we are fully staffed with the exception of the few that have resigned.
Well, I counted six.
So, we have. Right now, I'm seeing we have Marlene Montano is the one that resigned and then we have in leave of absence, we have a few. We have one, two, three pair educators that are taking leave of absence that we'll get substituted for. So we all, in this.
And we do have substitutes, right?
Yes, we have substitutes both. But yes, with the resignation, I see we have two, three, yes, four resignations and we'll open those positions accordingly, accordingly try to get hired.
The reason I ask is I have heard, I can't swear back if I haven't had a chance to check into it, that special ed has like one-on-one. And I think there's more than that. There's, I want to say there's several that need the one-on-one, but they don't have pairs or the support to do so.
I, sometimes get covered up in our report tonight and we actually have quite a few one-on-ones in the district. And then just even requesting a one-on-one depending whether the child needs it or not.
Certified position or?
No, no, it's there, it's depending on the pair position, it could be a pair of three position, which would be, they would need additional training or they would get some additional. It's a, it's not a teaching certificate, but it's called a behavior technician certificate. We do offer that training in the district. In fact, I think Libby right here. So, yeah.
And then one small thing, we seem to keep servicing refrigerators here. Is there just a real problem with that girl or what? I mean, this last one was over a thousand dollars just for serving.
Yeah, it all depends on, on the situation. I can look into that though. Yeah, we have a lot of refrigerators in this district and we have commercial refrigerators. We have just standard industry, non-commercial residential refrigerators. I know that we at Life Skills, we need a new refrigerator and they bought a new refrigerator at our Life Skills program at the new school. I just have to look into that.
Yeah, I recall that they did when they remodeled that.
Yeah, but we'll look into that.
Okay, that's enough. I mean.
Can we ask questions? Or no, are we not allowed?
Here with me.
So, I'm going out to college soon and I'm staying up for my own cards. So what's, what age do you guys recommend, like when you guys talk about hiring a pair, what age do you look for, for in a woman? Because I'd be down to like ghost spirits.
Well, we generally, once you graduate, you have to go take a pair test. And then once you can pass the test, we can hire you right out of high school.
Okay.
We probably not place you at high school potentially, depending on me.
I would love middle school.
Or kindergarten.
There you go. So, so we'll, we'll note that one day. Yes. Take the test, come back and you can sub even without passing the test.
I was gonna be a senior, that's not, that's gonna be the point of high school.
That's okay.
No, thank you.
They got, we got Lumber King right there.
And she's local.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Alright, now, if there's no objections, we'll have our votes to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Thank you. I promise to mess that up again next time. And we'll move on to reports now. First, athletic report and the wrestling team recognition.
Mr. Panter.
I will, I'll be really happy to introduce Coach Mark Kondo. I'll just let him come up and introduce the girls' state wrestling team that competed for our school this, this winter. Coach, come on.
First of all, I just want to thank the, the district and our high school for the support that they've given our, our girls' wrestling program. I know that Mr. Panter, Mr. Burton both have, have expressed their appreciation and, and congratulations to our girls and have been very supportive. So I appreciate that because without that, I don't think we could have been as successful as, as we have been. So, we had a great year this year. We, last year, we took four girls to state and at the beginning of the year, we were hoping we could get six and somehow we managed to get nine. So, we set the bar pretty high. So, I'm thinking about retiring so I don't have to worry about meeting that bar. But we, you know, I just, I think it's really a testament to, to not just what, what we do at the high school, but my, my son works at, at the middle school, has done a great job. I know that the little kids program has, I think, between 100 and 200 kids. And so, it really, and, and you know, we have parents that are supportive. And so, without everybody's efforts, I don't think we could be as successful as we are and I, I truly appreciate that. My assistant coach has done a great job. One of them came tonight, Sochi Tapoya, she's a graduate from, from Quincy and has come back and has built relationships with our, our young ladies and helped them. Kim Avalos wasn't able to be here. I think she's doing Kung Fu or something tonight. But she does a great job. Both our, our young ladies, they get mistaken for wrestlers because they look so young, but they do a great job just building a relationship with, with our young ladies and encouragement and help, you know. Because it is tough sport, but we had a great year. We took nine to state. Six of those girls returned. We had three placers and we're excited just to, to provide a positive experience for our girls, win or lose. So that when they look back years from now, they can say, you know, I really enjoyed being part of the wrestling team. I enjoyed my teammates. I had some great experiences. So, that's what we're trying to do and that's what we hope to do and, and hopefully the wins, losses will take care of themselves. But I'd like to introduce individuals. The first one, we'll start from this end here. Sophomore who finished sixth in state this year, Crystal Perez. And then we have a junior who's back and she managed to, to make it. She, she was injured quite a bit of the year, so I think it was a real testament just to her grit and her, her attitude that she, that she made it. Because we have seven through and she was in that fifth place match and she came through and, and, and won that match during her trip to state, but she did a great job. We look forward to having her back next year. But again, a true hero. If you want to stand up, you can show them your face and they'll, they'll really. The next young lady is a senior and, and I'm really, it's really amazing because she had never wrestled before this year. And I talked to her about coming out and she said, oh, I get kind of claustrophobic, I don't know, whatever. But she came out and as the year went along, I, I thought, you know, maybe she's got a chance. And sure enough, she ends up winning a trip to state and she won a couple of matches at state, but she had never wrestled before this year. So, I think it's a real tribute to her, her grit and just her athletics, athleticism. So we're hoping that she won't pass all her classes this year and can come back and. Julie, so her. The next young lady, again, in the fifth place match and she had wrestled a gal from Othello. DJ's a alma mater.
In the rosters.
Anyway, she, she had lost the girl twice during the year. And, you know, so we didn't know what was gonna happen, but she just, she, she kept in it and she was right there and she ended up pinning the gallery in her trip to state. And she's only a freshman, so we're really excited for, for her future, but Haley Corretti. The next young lady really has enjoyed the time to be able to spend with her grandfather. That's why she came out, but it was really exciting because we knew, you know, we talked about it and, and her goal was to make it to state. And then I said, you know, once we get here now, let's see what we can do. And, and she just, she really turned it on at the end of the year and viewed a couple of tough gals to get in for, for, for a place and ended up six, say, she's only a sophomore. So, we get to spend two more years together. I know she's really looking forward to that. And last but certainly not least, we have one of our team captains that is a senior and it's kind of sad to see her going, to, to go away, but I know she'll be back. If it's a pair, we don't know. But, so we talked about wins and losses. I, I was looking at her total career record. I think she had a full of like 130 wins. So, pretty significant, but she did a great job for us and placed last year, placed again this year. But senior Alondra Cordova did, just did a wonderful job for us and she's gonna do some great things down the road.
We have. We have three other young ladies.
Bad kids in check.
We have three other young ladies that weren't able to be here. I know a couple of them are playing tennis down in, in Seela, but I wanted to at least acknowledge them.
Kimberly Solano was another gal. She's a junior, so she's gonna be back. But she's another gal who had never wrestled before this year. And she ended up going to state, winning a couple of matches, so we're really excited for her to come back and, and help us out next year. Also, we have another senior, Crystal Vargas, who was, was close last year, but didn't make it and was really, her goal was to make it this year and she made it. She won some matches at state, so she had a, a great finish to her career. And the, the, the third person that isn't here tonight is a junior and really look forward to having her back. Because I know next year, it's not just making the state, it's to stand on the podium, but Jordan Ferguson will be back next year. So, Alondra, you hear it.
One thing to say about Crystal Vargas, if you guys are ever trying to get your summer bodies ready, that girl was wrestling 120 at state, stuck in her face at state and weighed in at 117. No, go with her.
Anyway. Again, we just really appreciate the support of the, the communal, entire community. We look forward to next year having another great year. And like I say, the main thing, just providing that positive experience for, for our young ladies so that they'll have something to remember out of high school. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Coach. Appreciate all the work that you put in this year and everything you've been, you've done for us at Quincy. You've done quite a few different things. I also want to acknowledge the boys' state participants. They, Coach Webly is in conferences and all the kids, all the boys are either in, you know, taking part in conferences or they're playing soccer or they're playing baseball tonight. So, they, they are staying busy. We have, we sent four wrestlers to state. Said Alvarez, Jase Reyes, Julian Silves, and Alejandro Barajas. Said Alvarez ended up finishing fifth at state and he ended up with the, the career total wins for Quincy High School. So, 133 wins. Alondra, how many did you get this year or for your career?
So I'm right there.
We'll research that.
The girl-boy record.
It's great to have two seniors finish this year with that many career wins. Also, the Booster Club, I don't see Kalani here, but they also purchased some signed boards for our gym acknowledging our wrestlers and our basketball players. So I want to thank that. The basketball players that are in the thousand point club, the both boys and the girls and the wrestlers that are in the hundred win club. So, Said is gonna get his name up there and Alondra's gonna get her name up there when we get those boards up there. So, be looking for that. Also want to acknowledge, while we're talking about wrestling. Coach Kondo, I know he wouldn't toot his own horn like this, but he was named the state two-way girls wrestling coach of the year. But he's not the only Kondo that won an award. Ross Kondo won the middle school girls coaching. And that was a recognition that was brought out by the wrestling coaches, the state wrestling coaches association. So really, it's voted on by their peers and, and who know and can appreciate the work that they do. Moving on to the athletics update. If you can take one and pass it down. I want to highlight some of the accomplishments of the athletic department this year. We'll wait till we get that handed down. The first thing that I want to bring your attention to is, is the GPA part. GPA for all Quincy High School athletes is a 2.99. That's, you take them all and, and we're almost, I mean, they were so close, we almost rounded up to a three. But I want her to be totally accurate. 2.99 is the GPA for all QHS athletes. For all Quincy High School, including the athletes, if you take every kid that's in Quincy High School right now, the GPA is 2.08. So, what I can say is that high school or athletics is the most effective academic intervention program we have in our school district. If you want your kids to graduate high school, if you want your kids to have good grades, if you want your kids to have fewer discipline problems, get them involved in sports. We, the data shows that it is a, a low-cost, high-reward program for, for us. The next thing I'd like to draw attention to is our year-over-year, where we're at with our multi-sport athletes. And gosh, Kalani's not here, but I got another request for her coming up about our three-sport athletes. I'll find her. So, this year, we had a total of 444 athletes. That's almost half our school. That's almost, when I first arrived, we were about 40% of our school was turning out for sports. Now we're almost 50%. One-sport athletes, last year we had 257. We increased by two and you think, well, that's not much, but when you look at, our total has increased. We bumped up in our two-sport athletes, 106 to 140, and we've almost doubled our three-sport athletes. And that's a trend that we want to continue to see because that's, that's, again, that's, that's that most effective academic intervention program we have in our district. So, that's good. More, more kids are getting involved, more kids are receiving the benefits and, and the community is receiving the benefits of being involved in our athletics program as well. To continue on, some of the more highlights I want to draw our attention to is the uptick we've seen in community and youth wrestling groups. Or not wrestling, wrestling too, but athletics groups with, with our youth in the club. Mid-state volleyball has picked up their, the numbers and, and their involvement and that's the, the local Quincy area volleyball club. We've had a reg, youth regulated wrestling and that, that's been going strong for a while and that continues to go strong. And, and that's a lot of work from, from our wrestling coaches and, and Coach Kondo, Coach Ross Kondo and Greg Martinez have a lot to do with that. And. I don't see Ross here anymore, but Mark, you happen to know how many youth rugby kids we have in, in regulated wrestling? It's, it's well over 200.
Two, yeah, it's right around 200 plus.
Yeah.
They just have their big tournament here in Quincy.
Yeah, if you drove by the school on Saturday, you, they were two blocks deep into Aho for, for parking. So, you know, and that's a big deal. Our AAU basketball has picked up over the past couple of years. And special thanks to Kelly Gern and Amber, gosh, I'm drawing a blank. But they, those two ladies have put in a lot of work to get a lot of organization into our youth basketball and, and get more kids involved. Club soccer, Quincy United club soccer has always been, you know, kind of like wrestling. It's, it's been strong for a while. And, and what I've seen is our coaches are becoming more integrated and cooperating or co-op, or collaborating with Quincy United a little bit more over the years. And, and if you saw our, one of our girls' soccer games this year, all the girls' Quincy United clubs came and we had a, a kind of a club night. And I was just talking with Joseph and Hector, our, our head boys' coach and, and they're gonna do the same thing with the boys' game coming up here as well. We've also increased the Booster Club. Once again, Kalani's not here, but the Booster Club has entered into a partnership with one of our district employees who has a training, athletic conditioning and training. Operation on, on kind of after-school. And they are, the Booster Club is sponsoring kids to take part, you know, before school, after school. And right now, we've got 38 kids involved in that and, and that's with some Booster Club sponsorship. And, and there are kids that are also involved that, that are, that are not taking along sponsorship as well. Unified basketball, we completed a full season with unified basketball, including a culminating event at Efreda. And the unified basketball team won, they won that event against Efreda, Moses Lake, Othello, Kashmir was there, we were there when Esmont was there, not when Esmont. Some other accomplishments, girls' soccer, they had their first win at Efreda in, in program history. That is, and, and that's big. We were, we were smidgen away, Alondra, right? We were smidgen away from beating.
Me and Julie were crying our last game, calling and Kondo's like, we'll see you practice the wrestling.
How close were we to beating Ellensburg?
So close.
So our girls' soccer team is making really, really good strides. Girls' basketball, season sweep of Efreda. That has never happened in history, including a win at Efreda. Hopefully, y'all gotta see it. That was an overtime win and that was Astrea Renteria hitting a free throw right, you know, basically there was no time left to, to get that. We talked about Said Alvarez, 133 wins. Can't also forget Alondra. Mark Kondo was named two-way girls' wrestling coach of the year, which you already mentioned, then Ross Kondo as well. Some areas of improvement. Some of our programs are competitive at the two-way level right now. Some of our programs, we need some help. And the, the message I want to tell, or I have been telling coaches and, and players and parents is, you know, the question is, what does it take to be competitive at the CWA at the two-way level? And the answer is, it takes what it takes. It's a non-negotiable. You can't make excuses out of it. You can't, you can't bargain your way into being a, a better team. You have to put in the work. You have to, you know, it starts with youth. So whatever sport that you are interested in or you're participating, it starts at the youth level. And you have to have that amount of time because the, the schools we're competing with, they are doing that. So we, in order to compete with them, have to have that, that include, you know, basketball. For example, between the last game of the season and the first game of next season, basketball teams need to compete in about 40 to 50 games minimum. You know, from between season to season. And that cannot be just our coaches because our coaches are not able to coach during, right now during spring ball season. So, we, we gotta get other coaches to come in and coach. They can't go straight fall ball season. Wrestlers, wrestling is a little different because actually they can coach because they're coaching freestyle, but, but we need the kids in the wrestling room to wrestle and, and getting work in during the offseason. Football players, yeah, and I see Coach Kondo's messages on remind every week, you're doing, you're doing Sunday and freestyle practice, right girls? Yeah, and so it's really important to, what does it take to be competitive? Well, it takes what it takes. And that's, that's what it takes to be competitive. You gotta, you gotta show up and put the time in. Football, you gotta be doing the training or the, you know, and, or the weight room. I mean, that, that's what it takes. And, and we need the adults, we need the coaches, we need the community involved in that. And it's not just the high school coaches. The high school coaches kind of are the ones that get a, you know, be the, 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 the top of the, of the iceberg there, you know, when they go to state. But when a team or individuals go to state, that is a, that is an indicator of community success. Because it takes so much more than just the high school coaches. It takes the kids, put in the time and it takes the parent's support in the kids. It takes the other community coaches throughout to, to invest that time throughout their kind of growing up. And, and that's important. And when a community has indicative of success like that, those are things that we take pride in, that community gets to enjoy the benefits of a good high school athletics program. You know, we get to have those celebrations, we get to have. a good high school athletics program. You know, we get to have those celebrations, we get to have uh, you know, congratulate the teams, we get to have all the all the fun stuff and pep rallies and and, you know, and we get to enjoy the improved academic interventions of a well-functioning athletic program. Uh, the other thing, the important emphasis that I want to, I'm really stressing on on our coaches and with support of the Booster Club is the continued coaches professional development to get coaches uh to to clinics uh to to hone their craft. And and you know, not only does the school district provide funds for that, but the Booster Club also has set aside funds to support coaches and professional development as well. So, you know, school board, uh school, I I I thank you for that and I thank you uh for your continued support. And I also want to say thank you to Booster Club for their continued support.
Sorry, I'm leaving. You'll you'll forget about me. Oh, yeah, I definitely love being a parent. So, in soccer practice, I feel like, well, because I am since youth, I've been soccer and wrestling, those have been my two sports. And for wrestling, wrestling is the only sport that I've wrestled boys. Like my whole family is like into wrestling, my boyfriend's family is wrestling, we're like, my boyfriend's family is all on the mat room. And I want to say like, I feel like that's the easiest sport to get along with teammates. And from a student athlete to another, like if being a freshman, I was scared shitless. I'm sorry. I was so scared. I'm sorry, okay. But I was really scared, obviously. And so Ducky was like my number one role model. And she's wrestled this one right here since they were small. My brother was in wrestling too at the high school and he played football and he would do baseball, but it was in his for him, but I feel like soccer is the easiest way like that boys and girls can compete because I remember um Tofoya, when we had summer practices, he would bring the United Soccer Boys to come scrimmage against us. And girls and boys are always like butting heads. And I think it's I don't know, I think it's one thing to work towards as a community, like how we're building houses now and talks going about a sport complex at Leisure Park and wrestling, I feel like it's so easy to like, I don't know, like if Haley was a boy, it's so easy like, oh, I can take you to the mat and I can beat you. But like boys are so competitive as are girls and I just want to know like what's something that like we can work towards to get like boys and girls to be supportive of of one another as the school district? Because my niece and nephews, uh they're wrestling too in the regulators program and my niece, she's in dance, my nephews are probably going to be in football and baseball and wrestling. So I I guess my question is like, what should we plan our goal towards being, making boys and girls student athletes being supportive of each other? And I apologize for that thing. I was scared. My first principal elementary teacher to give me a referral. Put me in my place.
Obviously, I do take.
Alondra, I think to answer your question, talking about school spirit, so how do we increase school spirit to have, you know, more uh more kids show up to the games, more kids take part in our activities?
May I add that soccer, soccer as a team, uh my boyfriend's in baseball and his cousins are in softball. But soccer supports baseball. They go watch a softball girl and they watch baseball. So I guess like what's what's our goal to making that happen with track, cross-country, tennis, soccer, wrestling? Wrestling like I feel bad for the students who haven't gone to see wrestling match because after I wrestled that old man girl, um well, her mom cussed me out with my mother-in-law sitting behind me and she's one rowdy woman. But wrestling, like you get so hyped and it's the same with basketball. I don't play basketball. I went to one practice in middle school and that was not for me. But the crowd gets so wild and like it's boys and girls, it's family, it's little kids who dream of being in high school and playing in front of a big crowd like that. And I think like, I want to say this, like twenty fifteen, I remember going to my second oldest brother, he was number fifty-five, he complains about having the football record. Um, but he like his games and my sister-in-law was a cheerleader when they had the wooden boxes. And I feel like his game, like every time he had a game, I wanted to go because the crowd was so wild. And I think Mr. Haggis, he just, he does a great job of like getting the crowd really like uplifted and like I just hear his voice, get up, get loud. Like it gets you like your adrenaline rush for the players on the field that you're not even on the field. You're like you know what? Let me go show you how it's done. That's how I feel when I'm watching some of my teammates wrestle. I'm like, I'll tag-team her for you. But I, yeah, how is our school spirit gonna do that and conjoin in like where tennis starts going to soccer games, like cross-country starts watching softball, like I guess like what are we gonna do as a community? And you guys look very like, very like, oh, here's what we can do, like all this stuff. And I think like school spirit's like such an important part of high school, like I'm a very shy person, but Sachi will tell you, once you get to know me, I will not shut up. Yeah.
Volunteer positions to drive school spirit, we found.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, this Alondra, you, with your paraphrasing, you know, we'll be on school.
I know nothing about baseball, but now I know not to make a silly mistake, but when me and Evander first started talking and we're talking about sports, I told him if his position was the one who hit the bat. And I did not know every player does that in baseball. And he clowned on me for it. But I guess that's what I'm saying, like soccer boys like want to go support softball, two totally different sports. Soccer, you play with your feet. Softball, you play with your hands. But I think that's so cool, like we could say like Quincy is like the most like, I guess supportive community, like wrestling is so big here, like our wall is almost filled with people who've gone to state or people stay places for that fact. So, yeah, school spirit.
Any questions from the board? Any questions?
What are you doing with formula?
Oh, thank you for asking. So uh in in the past years, we've had uh our games are more consolidated where our baseball softball play together. And so we have one gator that's been uh, you know, a John Deere gator that we dragged the fields with and then it would head down and kind of helps set up the field for soccer games, but those are usually on a different day. Now we're having many events on the same day, like, you know, like example today, we got baseball going on and soccer. We need to alleviate some of the stress of, you know, our our softball coaches don't have access to the gate or when the soccer coaches are setting the field and that needs to happen. So uh, uh, I've been, I've been working, I've I've been chatting with Bush about this. So using the four-wheeler to drag the fields and for field maintenance, it's gonna be a lot better tool uh than a a larger gator. And then it's gonna free up the gator for the other uh, you know, grounds crew and our soccer coaches to use. So it kind of takes some stress off of that.
Awesome. And Kim, I want to say, but she's actually at regulated wrestling right now with her her kindergarten, so that's, yeah.
I do have a question, I'll go first. Um, I'm not sure if you provide this report every year. I love data. Um, this is really interesting. I was gonna ask about the GPAs.
Yeah.
Uh, that's obviously a capture of a point in time.
Yes.
Or is it at the end of the school year? Like, what's your point in time that you're counting for this?
That was at the beginning of spring sports. So when all the spring sports kids were registered, we were able to capture like what that uh GPA data was at that time. Because if we did it during, or in the season, we just captured, you know, just fall sports or just fall and winter. So we got, we 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 got that when spring sports uh students were registered.
So then your GPA here is the average is two point nine nine for spring sports?
No, no, for all, for all, for all athletes. For for all the kids that are turning up for sports.
How frequent or like, when are you pulling these reports? I know coaches have to do it a few different times. So I guess, when are you collecting that?
We collect them throughout the year because we submit or I submit the GPA data to the WIA for the Scholastic Award. So it's it's one of those ongoing things that we continue to to uh to pull and then submit.
Is this something you manually can pull through a data system or is it the coaches are giving to you?
No, it's it's what we pull out of the Skyward and and we have some uh ladies that work in the counseling office that are very good at creating these very specific reports and getting some numbers from you.
Yeah, I mean, first off, kudos to the girl soccer uh team. I myself am a girl soccer player and the Efrida school is back in the day. So to hear that you guys beat them is incredible. I almost fractured my shin because of them. So. That feels so good to hear. Welcome, girls. Otherwise, I I mean, as far as an area from proven for athletic program, I really would challenge a department to figure out like, how are we measuring success? What would be a successful athletic programs? It's not just state championships. It's all this like program development, relationships with coaching staff. Um, so if there is the capacity, just how do you measure success within the program so that we can help and understand how to support athletic pro- programs? Like you said, this is half of our kids. It is absolutely determined for so many negative things. So it, I I know I'd like to really help emphasize and prioritize those kind of extracurriculars, so.
You know, I'm glad you brought that up because that was a point of emphasis during uh my spring sport coaches meeting. And I asked our coaches uh, you know, uh come up with a uh some data that's beyond the scoreboard. You know, come up with measures of success that are beyond the scoreboard because if that's the only measure of success, we're not always gonna be successful if that's it. And so uh my ask of them was to share uh with parents at the parent meeting, what uh, you know, what they, what a parent can expect to see from their son or daughter participating in their program. And an example I I came up with uh or or I shared with our coaches is, you know, as an example, a a a coach can tell a parent, you know, a student is in my program, you can expect them to get themselves out of bed by themselves every morning. You're not gonna have, parents, uh, my expectation is parents not gonna go in and wake that child up. If they're, you know, if they're playing baseball, baseball players will, you know, they're gonna make their own bed every day. They're not gonna have to be prompted to do that. They're gonna eat, they're gonna prepare themselves and eat a good, healthy breakfast. And 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 that's the expectation I have. And if if uh you're not seeing that at home, please reach out to me because you know, and that can be a a a measure of success that parents can see. And for being a part of their, you know, in in whatever program. And I I asked our coaches to to, you know, they could use that example if they want, but they can come up with their own. But something that's beyond the scoreboard is something that parents can measure.
I did review, uh, I forgot, you sent it to me, it looks like the files or something like that for athletic procedures.
QAA contract with the with the evaluation in it?
Yes, evaluation. I I would just challenge maybe for you to consider revamping that. So there is a better way to measure the success of a a a coach, a program. So again, we can get those quality metrics and then also just make sure it's a safe environment for all kids where they're all able to grow and have someone champion for them to be successful in whatever they decided to do. But I, for example, I'm so curious to know like retention rates from beginning, first day of practice to last day of practice. How many kids did you lose? Not that that's a negative for the coach, rather, it's just interesting. What was it? Was it grades? Was it then moving? Just it it'd be really interesting to hear about that. So that's my opinion.
And I hear a lot because we're negotiating that contract this year. So, yeah, that might seem a quick conversation. And I do, just one thing brought for all this work, it was awesome. I dropped my daughter off at a baseball game tonight. We had varsity soccer, varsity baseball, JV soccer, or or just kids playing soccer, track practicing, the whole field of all of our facilities were just being used by kids and they're doing safe activities with their peers. And I know a lot of the track kids, because my son was one of them, they went over and then shared on uh the baseball team. So it is really cool to see that, 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 yeah, there you go.
Are they with Bella?
Yeah, they're there.
I do one with those sibling names. It's so cute.
That was my wife. Uh, but you know, a wise man will said, it takes a community to raise a champion. And that was Mark Kondo. And uh, it's true. And that's one thing, we've taken some notes early on in the CWA, but the way that the Quincy community that responding to step up uh to make sure that our kids have everything they need to be successful. And that does start with youth programs all the way up to the high school varsity programs and our varsity coaches talking and 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 in contact with our club programs. That's happening right now and that is really encouraging, something that we haven't had before, really to this level. Um, so I I have all of it in the world that we are gonna be better in the future.
I just thought of an idea of my big old school spirit thing. I think it'd be so cool if, well, unless we find a big enough place, or maybe we could like have an event at Lounger Park where like one a day, like in the summer, like who wants to come see if they're good at baseball? Who wants to come see if they're good at soccer? Who wants to see if they can go on long runs? That'd be so cool because for me, I've always stuck with two sports. That's why I love the number two. But that's been my sport since my mom was yelling at me to go warm up on the mat and I was crying to her that I didn't want to wrestle. But look at me now. And I think it's so cool, like, like, um, Crystal Hargis, she's a three-sport athlete and she's been with me since youth soccer. Her mom has coached me. She's an amazing coach, like she like, she's like undescribable of how amazing she is. She's a mom, um, her, her boyfriend's daughter, so basically Crystal's like sister Joanna Mendoza, who also was in soccer, but unfortunately she could not play her senior year to her full potential because she did get hurt in one of our games. Which I just, it just goes to show how competitive we are as girls in wrestling, like I literally told Yaslin, I don't know if you guys know this, but Yaslin, the track star, she has a name at school because she did basketball too. Everyone calls her Yaslin Curry. And I ran the track with her yesterday with um Bella when we were playing soccer in the fields. I'm like, no way Yaslin Curry is here. And we ran the track together and I told her, I'm like, you'd be pretty good at um wrestling. And she's even told me, like, she's thought about it. Like, most of the times, like if someone like my niece, then she's older than me, let's say if she's older than me, if she dances, she's like, I want you to come try dancing. I would straight up tell her no, but like stuff for that and to start them at at a young age to see what they can be good at, like you don't even know like if Haley's like freaking beast at softball. But Julie just plays softball too and Julie's a freaking actor. She's a theater kid, which popped to her because she like had me eating my popcorn. But I think that'd be cool, like, especially like for high school, like come train with the high school student athlete, come train with um a high school coach for a day. Like stuff like that that we can do in the summer where we have more free time and like people who are yeah, they don't have to go to school. Some people have summer jobs, like I have a summer job, but it's like we announce that maybe like on the Quincy School District page, like we want to have a week full of fun and sports in summer, like when the sun's beating hard, just have obstacles after play music, you know, I think it'd be amazing.
We really appreciate those.
We have to give a bunch more reports to move on.
Okay, so I think it's okay.
Thank you, Brent.
Thanks, Brett.
Brett, sorry.
Thanks, Alondra.
Sunshine?
Yep.
No pressure.
And my team, come on up, guys. Well, I was super excited and very nervous, but Alondra, I'm not nervous anymore. She helped me right out, so. Yeah, yeah. I really have been very blessed to work with such an amazing team here at the district office this year and my people. And some of them even just came to surprise me tonight, so. Um, all right, I'm sorry, we we had an access issue. So if you can't currently click on it, it won't open. It will be up here and then we'll get it fixed for you. So there was a little glitch where people could edit. So as people were going through it, things were getting moved earlier today. So I just want to take a second and introduce Lisa Martinez. She's the special education coordinator and she works right here in the district office. And then I also want to introduce Ms. Amadio, Christina Amadio. She's gonna start out by speaking about the resource room, so that's setting for you guys. And she's at Monument. And then we're gonna have Mindy Burns, whose life skills at the high school also speak for a little bit. So they're gonna start out our presentation, Ms. Amadio.
Okay. How do you follow that young woman with so much energy? I don't know. I'm gonna try. So anyway, I'm Christina Amadio. I'm the special education teacher at Monument Elementary School. I'm thankful that my uh principal is here today to support me. That means a lot to me. So the resource room is an amazing place. Everything happens in the resource room. Um, during an attempt, you walk in any day and you just, you're not really sure what's gonna happen because it's a place for everything. Um, learning of course is key. That's what we're there for. But you're also dealing with kids with social and emotional issues, concerns, you're dealing with children with learning disabilities. issues, concerns. You're dealing with children with learning disabilities. And you're dealing with adults that are coming in and out, asking for information on how to handle a situation or just looking for, you know, some words. I have one teacher that comes in and just hangs out at my Lego table. So there's all kinds of neat things that happen in there. Um, some of the things that I'm most proud of, especially design instruction, that's part of a student's I E P. It's a I E P is an individualized education plan. It's a legal document. It's something that I write. Um, I try to write them well. I'm learning all the time. A part of the I E P is specially designed instruction. And specially designed instruction is the instruction an individual child gets that meets their particular need. And their need again could be a social emotional issue. It could be an academic um, or a behavioral. It's everything. Um, the uh, resource room also is a place for one-on-one learning. I have one little guy that's in my room right now, not all day. He he comes in, he has a one-on-one para educator that you were talking about. Amazing. Um, he comes in and he has a safe place to land, a safe place to do his learning. Cute little story. I was leaving on Friday, leaving a little bit early. I have all my stuff to gather up to go. And he goes, I go, well, I'm gonna head out. And he goes, you can't leave. Who's gonna take care of us? Like, it's gonna be okay. Anyway, um, so a lot of what I do is scaffolding materials, breaking things down to like the smallest piece of information. You might take a paragraph and with my kids, you might do a line of text at a time. You wouldn't give them the whole paragraph. You'd give small bits of information. Um, uh, we're doing a lot with phonics, phonics. I graduated from college in nineteen ninety-five. Phonics was not a thing in nineteen ninety-five. I'm learning alongside of my my kids. One of the things I'm most proud of is the collaboration I have with my high cap teacher, my um, T B I P and my lab. We communicate with each other. We work together. It's fantastic. We have children in my building who are double dipping in special education and in high cap, which I'm very proud of that. Um, let's see. Another thing, a safe place to land. I mentioned that before. It's not just for specialized kids. It's a safe place to land for all children in my building. I have kids that come in that need a little extra time, an extra place to be, and my room's always a safe place to be. Um, what else? Some kids just come in and check in multiple times throughout the day. Just come in, check in, maybe they sit and uh, do a little kinetic sand or do a little Lego, just as a reset. They need that reset before they can go on and do learning in their general education setting. Uh, again, collaboration with my gen ed teachers. We have a fabulous collaboration on Mondays. I uh, it takes place in our cafeteria. I move from uh, grade level to grade level. Fantastic. There um, the teachers that don't have kids in special education, we have conversation about children who don't have special needs. And the things that uh, what we're doing for kids with special needs can be done with kids who don't have special needs. It's just this wonderful opportunity to share ideas. Another thing I'm super proud of is the wraparound from our developmental preschool. That's been phenomenal. We um, have, what were there, five?
Five.
Five, five uh, five boys and one little girl that came up from the developmental preschool. And it's been phenomenal because I can offer a s- a a place for them where they can still play. They can still do what they did. It's more familiar than like what they were doing at the developmental preschool. They have that safe place to be. Um, small group social emotional learning, that's a big thing. Um, all of our kids need to have an opportunity to tell you what's going on. And one of the biggest things with the students I work with is letting them have the opportunity to say what they need to say. Here are my grades. Um, so in this picture on the end, students who were not speaking a year ago are now talking and participating in the super six store. It's phenomenal. Uh, three of the boys in that picture weren't talking last year at this time. And they are now talking not only to me, but to other teachers and folks in our building. It's it's a collaboration between all of us. It's fantastic. A safe place to try new things. They were dancing. But again, that's a place to be who they needed to be. And general education students and special education students learning social emotional skills side by side. So that's the resource room as quickly as I could put it. It's a fantastic place. I welcome you to come to my room. It's, you're always welcome if you wanna be entertained. Just never know what's gonna happen. But I'm very proud of our school. I'm very proud of my classroom and um, thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Mindy. I'm the high school special education teacher in the life skills room. And life skills um, has students with uh, maybe some higher needs when they spend a majority of their day in my classroom. And they go up to general education uh, for two periods a day, so they're with me most of the day. Um, the core components is personalized learning, daily living skills and social skills training. Um, so just like she talked about, um, the ma- you know, we implement I E Ps and provide specially designed instruction. And in the life skills room, we also wanna focus on functional independence and daily living skills. So I wanna teach them things like cooking, um, self-care, laundry, navigating their environments independently, money management and budgeting skills. Um, we also work on social skills training, peer interaction and communication strategies, problem solving and self advocacy skills for our students. Um, the other part of the high school level is preparing for adult life. So we have community integration, vocational skills, and the eighteen to twenty-two transition focus. Um, right now, we go into the community three days a week and we're partnered with EKINs, Q H N L and the market. And we have, I think it's five students that go out with two para educators and they work on job skills at those different locations. They love it. They always come back with a cookie or a donut.
Thursday, Thursday at one o'clock, if you wanna see our kids eating cookies.
Oh, and they love it. They just get every, I can write on the board what time, where they're going, and they're out the door as quick as they can to go to the community. Um, so we'll work on vocational skills, so trying to figure out what students wanna do for a job after high school. Um, we work on appropriate behavior and workplace communication, resume building and interview practice. Um, and we're developing, trying to improve our eighteen to twenty-two. Now I'm at twenty-one, I'm giving that, it's twenty-two now, uh, transition program. And so trying to come up with a a really uh, robust program that after students earn their cred- uh, diploma, they have job training and community access skills and really honing in on their uh, post-secondary goals and what they wanna do. Um, yeah, that. And then um, celebrating our students. Our quit, uh, Mr. Andrew, he's gone, he touched on this. Um, our uh, high school and middle school unified basketball team took flight, first place at their end of the year tournament. And then we had two, more than two students, but two students that participated in Special Olympics. Uh, we can't take credit for Special Olympics. It's its own entity and there's a great family that runs it here and um, coaches in the community. But I wanted to shout them out here that they uh, both medaled. Um, one student got uh, two golds and one got a bronze. I might be wrong on how many, but uh, so I just had to shout them out because that's amazing. So this was um, the Special Olympics um, through the whole state. So not just Quincy. Um, and then I wanted to show off one of my students' artwork. He makes the little cars characters out of construction paper. Um, and he just cuts them out for like fifteen minutes, so I'm getting. Um, and I just had to show them because I loved them. So that's all I have for life skills. Since there's any questions or I'm gonna have something.
So I just wanna say, they both talked about S D I and I E Ps and all the compliance pieces, which are true, absolutely. But that last picture of that kid's artwork, right? That really highlights what we do. And both of these two, I walk into their room. I walk into Miss Amadio's room and the kids all come in and she's like, good morning, friend. How are you today? Blah blah. Do you need a snack? Do you need this? Kids will come in just to eat in there. Yes, S D I is important. Yes, teaching is important. But the love and nurture that the teachers give to those students that make them feel loved, accepted and wanted to be there, that's what's most important. And I just want you guys to know, I really, really, truly appreciate all the work you do. If they do have parent-teacher conferences, so if you need to go, I know they want to have ones. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Okay, so you got to hear about some of our programs. Resource Room is what is happening in pretty much every one of the elementaries. There's a resource room. Life Skills um, is at, we have the Developmental Preschool at A A L E K two is uh, Life Skills at A L E. Then Pioneer has a Life Skills, the middle school and the high school. So how many staff do we have, right? This is important. So we have twenty-two and a half certificated staff members. And um, those are the special education teachers, our school psychologist, our B C B A, our behavior person and the coordinator. Those would all be our certificated staff that are in the special education department. And then classified, those are mostly paras. So that fifty-two is mostly our our paras. And we have three levels of paras. So you asked about that. Para one is a para that's going to work um, supporting education in either the resource room or in the general education classroom. They'll come in and they'll work with our students who have special needs that we know need a little bit of support. So they'll be like piled up, doing a reading group or whatever that could look like. Then we have para twos. Those paras support students that have higher needs, medical needs, bathroom needs. Um, they could be in the resource room or general education. So we have some that are um, in the resource room and then they pop over into the life skills classroom because they have diapering needs and that they're back out. So that para two does those kinds of duties. The para three is the one-to-one and they work with um, mostly behavior students in the district where we, and and sometimes it's not behavior, but mostly it is. And that is a one-to-one person that's with that kid the entire day. Um, it doesn't have to be the same person. So what I have really started doing this year is um, pairing two paras up with one student, because if you're working with a really difficult student, it's hard not to take it personal at the end of the day. So if you know I'm gonna do it for three and a half hours, then I'm gonna go be with a different student. There's kind of a relief with the staff. So that has really started happening. And then there's another classified member that we have that's similar to a para. They're the R B Ts, so the registered behavior technicians. And we have two in the district. And they work with our highest behavior need students, like making sure. And they just have an extra level of training. But I will say, last year we opened up and did an R B T training. Um, and we had districts from all over. You know, they paid for their people, but they came here. And I wanna say we ended up with another fifteen paras that have had the training, but they haven't become R B Ts. So they've had all the training. The next step would be getting the certification and then being overseen by the B C B A. But honestly, what they really needed was what are, what are some of the things that I don't know, some of the strategies? And um, and then we have classified staff, like we also have uh, teletherapy assistants. So we have three teletherapists that do speech language um, services for students, but they're over a computer. So to make that work, we have an assistant that goes and gets the kids from the class and brings the student to the room and then sometimes helps them get logged in on the, on the portal, however it is that, because we have three of them from three different places. So they all have a different setup, so they have to know all of that. We have a staff member that does um, Braille, and then our special education secretaries would also be in that classified staff number. And then you see the contracted staff. So when you see contracts come through and you're like, what is this forty-six thousand dollars to the E S D? Well, that's some of these services. So we contract with um, the E S D. And then I also have three other contracts for like S L Ps. So those are speech language pathologist. Um, this is an assistant, so they can do services, but they can't I E Ps, but they can support um, doing the actual services. Teacher of the visually impaired, orientation and mobility, a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing. We have a one-to-one nurse for a student that has to have nurse with them all the time. A one-to-one interpreter. These are contracted because we don't have them as district employees. A P T and O T that are point six and a school uh, psychol- or a psychology assistant that's one point O. And so one point O would be five days a week. So point two is a day. So if they're point six, they're in the district three days a week. So this is what makes up our staffing to cover four hundred and thirty-four students. Okay, here's the data, Diana Light's data. Okay, on this one, this is our, these are our programs and this is the L R E. L R E is the least restrictive environment. And it basically means we wanna have the students in the least restrictive environment closest to their peers where they can still be successful, right? So it's a balance. It's gotta, it could be a little bit of different things. So right now, we have two preschoolers that are in an L R E one that are in our program. That means they're probably in TK or they could be in um, Inspire right now because that program, we go serve students there as well. And then the rest of our preschoolers, because our developmental preschool is one hundred percent special education, or if they're served only in speech, we only see them thirty minutes a day for, or thirty minutes a week for speech. That's in a special education setting because it's a private one-on-one tutor or speech session. Then elementary, K five, this L R E one, this is that resource room like Miss Amadio was talking about usually. There's a hundred and fifty-two kids there in L R E two, which means they're with their gen ed peers forty to seventy-nine percent of the day. There's eleven at the elementary and then L R E three, these would be our life skills students. There's nineteenth elementary. Then when we look at secondary, our six twelve, we've got a hundred and thirty-five in L R E one. Notice the uptick here. Seventy-two in L R E two and then thirteen in our um, L R E three. I will tell you, two short or three short months ago, that this number was still even higher than it is right now. But we've been working on stuff. And so we are, I want you guys to keep this in mind because we're gonna come back to that. Hey. And then I just wanted to show you, there's thirteen categories that students are identified for special education. And of our students, we have twelve of them. And actually, I think there's one who might meet the other one. But this one, the reason I have it like that is because that's actually two qual- uh, qualifying areas. So you can see our students and that the biggest area is specific learning disability. And that's one that um, we use the discrepancy model right now, um, which is kind of like, what should they be able to do, but what are they actually doing? And if there's a discrepancy in that, then we say they have a specific learning disability. That is something that I will say, my sites are all here. Did I do okay there, guys? This is one that as a district and as a state, we're really focusing on because that discrepancy model is supposed to be going away. And we're really supposed to be using more of a M T S S model and saying, are kids making growth? Is, you know, is there other things? Are there accommodations we can do that can support them without saying they have a disability? Because that, that is a big deal to say your child has a disability, right? So we really wanna be conscious of that. All right. And now Lisa's gonna come up and highlight some of our, this comes off of the um, my work plan and Lisa's gonna talk about it a little bit.
All right. So we pull a lot of data at the district office in order to help facilitate all the um, wonderful staff that we actually have. So one of the things that we pull, and this is only for the secondary, is we pull like the D N F list. And that comes once a month to us and then we try to help facilitate that. We look at classes that the students are enrolled in and that helps with our least restrictive environment to look at their classes are matching their I E P goals and if their service matrix is matching all of that. So we look at that data and make sure that their specially designed instruction is taking place. We also look at their state and district-wide assessments. We're looking at their STAR data or um, reading, math. And then we're looking at their S B A scores and hoping, and that's helping us facilitate the discussions for if the students are placed in the correct place. So we do a lot of um, looking at data and then helping facilitate those conversations.
Okay, the other thing, stay here. The other thing um, is that when we look at this, our outcome isn't all students feel accepted, right? Included, celebrated. So we're looking at all of that to make sure our students are getting what they need, but part of this like is really making sure that our students are seen and heard. And we've made an extra, I think, I feel like an extra effort to support our students and our families. Um, we provided our first life skills family night in February. And um, I'm gonna call it a great success. Only five families showed up. That's a great success because it was the first one. And we provided childcare and we had snacks, the school sites were there, social worker, all of my life skills teachers. My office staff was there, coordinator, and um, and we provided a speaker. So we brought in parent-to-parent to speak, to speak to the families about like what do they need. And I'm excited to say that our next one will occur in April. We're gonna do it quarterly. Um, and I have D D A coming in to speak to the families and parent-to-parent is coming back because they're trying to build a group here for families. And we've given him the end to like find families so that they can have a support. Because really, parent-to-parent is about supporting parents with somebody else who's going to do the same thing that they've gone through. Um, also excited uh, to talk about our life skills um, field day. So last year, Connel and Othello participated with us. This year, we also have included Warden Soplakini Freida to come join us. So it's gonna be a big event and um, we're super excited about that. And so just really trying, like my goal this year has been to get more kids in a, in the least restrictive environment and to really reach out, make connections with families. Because this is a hard, uh, it's not easy being told that your student has a disability and then to feel like I don't understand the and then to feel like, I don't understand the evaluation, I don't understand the IEP process and I don't know what to do to support my student. Like that's our role as the special education department is to just kind of wrap around those families and give them that support that they need. And then we've all kind of talked about Unified, but if you didn't make it out to Unified game, you gotta go to one of them for soccer. So Unified basketball um was one of the best experiences that I've seen for some of our students. So I have a student who's really difficult. And um, I got to watch him in a different environment playing basketball. And he handed the ball to a student so that they could make the basket. I know that was hard for him because he likes to make all the baskets, but he knew he needed to share and he gave that ball to somebody else. And I watched gen ed peers work with their, work with students to make sure they could get the ball. And I watched a student from a different district who was blind. People set him in front of the basket and there's a beeper so that he could hear, right? Like it's just amazing to go, these kids are able, they can do things. It's us putting boundaries on them is the problem. So just really cool. So if you haven't, if you didn't make it out, make it out to see um Unified Soccer. Okay.
So the next one is rigorous and relevant um learning experiences. So at the beginning of the year, we really front-loaded a lot of information to our staff. We worked on looking at assessments. We pulled gen ed assessments in. And as a team, we tried to look at accommodations that we could have that would help facilitate those conversations with those kids that are in their classrooms. How could we modi- not modify, how could we accommodate these kids so that they'll be able to be successful in their classrooms? What could we do to the test? And we really came up with some gen ed things that we could help with them. We also recently started doing the para educator trainings for the foundational course studies. So those are just some of the things that we're doing for experiences and things that it's making a difference.
Yeah, we have done a lot. Um, one of the things I think about is our professional development. And we have done, um, last year, we, we went through and there was an um IEP review form. And it kind of gave the outline. It was a nice rubric for the um case managers to go through when they were writing an IEP. But then they were still struggling. So this year I went and I put examples for everything. That also helped the admin that's sitting at the meeting go, what should it look like? Because I've given them like, these are the examples. This is optimum of what it should look like. So I'm just a lot of that, a lot of um, I, I get phone calls all the time. I can't figure out this IEP or I don't know how to do this. And I'm right there, ready for the phone call. And then I really wanna do a shout out also that I've been working with teaching and learning and um our multilingual. So um Allison and Victoria and really saying, what can we do as a team to look at students? So let's look at all the data. Let's look at all of our students and determine what's the best placement. So like an example, we had a kid, and Allison and I are looking and we're like, do they need an elective, a special educational elective, or would they be better off in our really great reading? And we're having that conversation and looking at data. And I, from what I hear, it's the first time that we've really done it to that depth. So super excited about that. Okay, here we go. So what's currently offered in the Quincy School District? So at elementary, we have developmental preschool, the K two life skills, three, five life skills, resource room, and then full inclusion, kids that are in general ed all day long. And that would be like, usually that's a student who's probably working right at grade level. Um, or the paras are pushing into the classrooms or they're speech only, so that's the only time that they're pulled out. Then in six, in the secondary, we have six, eight life skills, nine, twelve, twelve plus because our kids can now stay till they're twenty-two, students can stay till they're twenty-two. And then we have this limited inclusion and that was kind of my baby that I, I started developing at the end of last year to put into this where we had more kids out with para or teacher support in the classroom at the secondary level. And then we have this replacement core and we have full inclusion.
Replacement core?
Yeah, go ahead and click. Thank you. That's what we're gonna talk about.
Yeah.
And you're pulling tricks on me. No, it's a technology.
Yeah, that was it. I didn't even, I just put a whole other slide. I didn't even do a transition.
How much is that arrow? That's expensive.
It was expensive, yeah. So I want you just to think back to what the slide was where I talked about the LREs and that jump from like eleven kids at elementary being in LRE two to seventy-two in the secondary being in LRE two, right? My question is, was why? Why do we have so many kids in LRE two? And um, that became my big project for the year. So we're gonna hand out this for you. Um, the reason was our schedule. So it wasn't student need. It was when we have a math class and it's a replacement math and we have a replacement ELA. That is now a special education setting and our kids are being pulled for two periods, which now means they're in LRE two. So the question became, well, how do we fix that? Because that's not acceptable for our kids to be in a replacement class just because they have an IEP, right? Like it could be that they need a replacement class, but it shouldn't be that every kid with an IEP is going into a replacement class. So I really worked on, and you have it kind of as all a one-pager, but I'm gonna go through some slides here about it. So first thing was, I looked at, well, what could our continuum of services look like? So right now we have full inclusion. And this is where that SDI, that specially designed instruction is provided by the general education teacher and they collaborate with the special education teacher. Then there's this limited model that I was like, this is what we need. This is full inclusion and core content, ELA and math, but it's supported thirty to forty-five minutes a week by special education staff where they're pushing in. This was what I added this year. And I told myself, we're gonna give it two years and we'll add another teacher. But as I worked this year, I can't let it sit for two more years. We gotta come up with something else. So then I said, well, what if kids need more, right? What if they need more? So this is the supported. Kids will be in full inclusion and core content, so it's being taught by the math or the ELA teacher. And it's supported four days a week where a special education person, either para or a teacher, are in the class with them for periods a day or four periods, uh, four times a week is what I mean. So the one, I kept out one day right now because I see us pulling the teachers and working with them on how do we, how do we accommodate our students in these classes? What is that teacher getting ready to teach that we might need to help create the poster, the visual poster that our students are gonna need in that math class? So that's what the one day is, why they're, why they're only on there four days a week. And then I said, but I know some kids, they're gonna need a spot to like regulate, right? Like Miss Amadio was saying, they're gonna need a quieter space during the day at some point in time. They might need support getting this stuff done. So what if we had one period of special education, like that resource room, but only one period? And then why, it's like, but we know there's a group of kids that they just, they're not gonna be successful here. So we found, so I created this foundations limited and it's a replacement ELA and a replacement math class, depending on what they need. And then all of their, their classes are in gen ed. So they get that replacement, but there's a specific student who needs that. And then foundations, which is life skills. Those students are in there for their foundational reading, math, writing, social, emotional, behavior adaptive and they're out for two electives offered each semester for them. Usually it's PE and something else, but they get out two times. So I said, okay, I'm gonna start with that. And then I said, next slide.
Sorry.
I was like, and then, um, I really said, well, who are the students as learners? Because you can have the exact same test score, but not be the same kid of the learner, right? So I said, if you're in full inclusion, this student needs to be able to advocate for themselves. So they're able to say, hey, I need some help. They can, their accommodations can be supported in the classroom and the students are kind of able to keep up mostly the same as their peers. Limited is the student's able to advocate for themselves, their accommodations are supported, they can mostly keep up. But maybe the student needs an adult to check in and go, hey, I know she have two missing assignments. I'm gonna sit here with you. Let's get those done, right? Supported is a student is really unsure. They could be quietly non-compliant. They aren't gonna cause any problems, but they're also not gonna get anything done. And accommodations are supported in the classroom here too, but the student needs scaffolding to access that content. So they need that special education person to come along and go, let me help you break this equation down. Let's look at how this angle works, right? So taking it down another step for them so they can be um, they can be successful. A targeted elective could be for any of the kids on this side and this side, right here, this foundations limited. Any of these kids could possibly also be in a targeted elective. So this is for, we're gonna make sure students who are unsure about asking for help, need more support to complete assignments. Maybe these kids that are out in all the other classes need support working on those assignments. So this is what this class is for. And then here, when we're thinking about these students, they're working on basic copying skills. And remember, this is six twelve. So they're working on basic copying skills. They're still maybe trying to learn how to blend sounds. Maybe they can't count to a hundred or two hundred, basic math. So that's these kids. And then the only big difference here is that these students need alternate access for social studies and science. But here's the big one, they have a safety need, right? They have a safety need and we can't just let them wander the hall because they might walk out. There might, we might lose somebody. We don't want that. So um, that's the biggest difference there. So I really looked at who are these kids as learners? And then what were their assessment scores? So when I went through the data, I looked at every grade level and I said, what was the average STAR score for a sixth grader in our district? If our kids are average, they should definitely be down here with these other students, right? So we said, okay, let's look at STAR scores. I figured out their SBA scores and said, okay, what's kind of the average of that? And then if they've already been successful in inclusion, well, it's a no-brainer. They need to stay in inclusion. For our limited kids, same thing with average. And um, student was successful in this limited or inclusion before. I did notice I had some students that were in inclusion and maybe they got a D. So this next year, we put them in limited, like let's give them a little bit more support. Um, here, STAR scores that are lower than average, SBA scores that are lower and the student was not successful in one of these full and more full inclusion models. And then this is really could be, but these, these kids probably have low um SBA scores and low STAR scores. They've struggled in the inclusion area and this is the big one. They need support to complete assignments. And some of these students don't take district or state assessments. They're um, they take a different type of law aim. Or they take um, they could do some with their scores are significantly lower than their peers. Okay? And this was the one I did today. So when I first created this, I guessed, um, I said, I'm gonna guess what the numbers are gonna be with a hundred kids in each building. This is how it would play out. And I kind of had pretend numbers in here. And today I went through because we've placed all these kids for next year and we know what classes they're gonna be in. So I went through and this is an average, I'll just tell you that. So like this QMS average, it's twenty-two between, I looked at like their math and the ELA and I found the average of those two, because I didn't wanna list out math and ELA. So at full inclusion at the middle school, we've got twenty-two. In limited, we have sixteen. In supported, we have thirty-one. In the targeted elective, now mind you, they're in one of these classes for here. We've got fourteen foundations limited, there will be five students there and foundations, there'll be nine. And then for the high school, we've got twenty-five in full inclusion, eighteen in limited, fifty-four in supported, twenty-seven with the targeted elective, three in the foundations limited and seven in um foundations. And what's really, what changes is this group is not now all in that LRE one. This group is in LRE one, this group is in LRE one. This group here, still in LRE one because they're only out by one period a day in special education. And now at the middle school, we're only looking at fourteen kids in LRE two or three. And at the high school, we're only looking at ten. That's huge. Our kids deserve to be in general education classes, hearing the content and having that, having that possibility. So that was today's data that I was like, oh, I gotta know what the numbers are now that we have it all. So. So I will tell you, um, this is a big leap. This is a really big leap. And um, I'm prepared to support people because this is a big, this is a big ask. Um, it's when you talk about scaffolding for um students in a classroom, it stresses general education teachers out because they're like, I don't know how to do it. But we have been working really hard as a district, as a team, looking at AI to help support them. And we started realistically, as Lisa was saying, we started this fall when we started going, let's pull general education lessons that you would possibly have. And how would you help your students and the gen ed teachers? So we've been working on that as a department already. Now we know um what our next, what our next steps are. And, yeah, okay. So based on data,
Thank you.
We've already, um, we've already placed them. So that part's been done. We're currently working on amending any IEPs that need to be done. We've already discussed that we're gonna review the data quarterly. So we're gonna look at the students and go, how are they doing in those gen ed classes? And the cool thing is because they're in a gen ed class, but they need more support, they can go from seventh grade math with this teacher to seventh grade math with this teacher in the same spot in the curriculum, but this class has a para four days a week or a teacher in there four days a week. So we, that won't have to, it won't be like, oh, big changes for students. And we know this is where we're working right now. We know we need to be supporting our general education teachers. Like we need to let them know what we're gonna do and how we're gonna help them. Um, utilizing paras, this is a must. We know that because they're gonna be in the classrooms and sometimes um, paras don't, they, they're not sure what the teachers want them to do or sometimes they get sitting with the kid that's really hard. And so how could we best utilize those paras? Um, and then really planned PD on inclusive practices and we're already working on that for next year's Lit Day. The priority standards. So last year, we started writing IEPs towards uh, the con- are the grade level standards. And then I went to Allison and I said, what are the priority standards? Because if my special education teachers are gonna write IEPs, it'd be nice if they were writing them on the most important standards that we have determined as a district. Um, really teaching that the content comes from the general education teacher and we're helping as a special education department to provide access. And then this one, accommodations, support everyone. If I do a GLAD poster to help in a math class, it's not gonna be just up for the special education students, right? It's gonna be up for every student that might need that or multilingual learners might need that. Students who are just struggling might need that. And then using AI to support scaffolding. So, and we've been doing that at different meetings. And I played with it the other day and I had some middle school teachers, um, special education teachers play with it. And I put a s- a standard in and I said to this, it was a eighth grade or seventh grade math standard. And I said, I need this standard scaffolded down to a student that currently is working at a third grade math level. And it put all the information out. And then I said, um, I need to know, I think I asked it, like what are the scaffolds? It tells me that. I said, what are the main misconceptions students have on this? Put that out. And then I said, could you give me a three-question prompt that I could give to students to determine our misconceptions before we start? And it did that. And that took me five minutes. Now I did go back in and review all of it, so I don't know that it was all correct. But it can be done that fast. Stuff that used to take me, you know, a full day of sitting down and trying to design something can now be done like that. I just have to go back through it and look at it. So. And then next is our areas of focus. So this is what we've been working on, strong communication. Um, I meet with the psychs um pretty much weekly, one week for behavior, one week for a psych meeting um with the BCBA every other week. Uh, I meet with my team every week and um, I'm, I'm available whenever the teachers need me. I pop in and visit with them. Quarterly data progress checks on students, so that's a big focus for us for next year. Collaboration focusing on support for the general education teacher. So I've been talking to admin about this that have asked me to come out and start doing trainings. They've also asked for para educator trainings, which we just started some this year. But next year, we're gonna do something focused a little bit more on how do we support inclusion as para educators? And then training for the general education teachers on how to use those paras effectively. And then continued collaboration with teaching and learning in our multilingual. Okay. And then there's just some links for you. I left in there for you. My work plan and then the benefits of inclusion for students with disabilities. Okay, what questions can I answer?
Do you have a second page?
That, that was all of the um, the, except for the last one that I just added with the data. But if you want that, I can add that, send it out to you. Yeah. I just today, I was like, I was looking at my pretend numbers that I had made up and then I was like, I wonder what they actually worked out to do. And it did work out like I figured, supported is the highest area right now. Which I think if we were to come back and look this down in three years, I don't think that will be the highest. Because right now what's happened is our kids left elementary getting gen ed time and some resource time. More gen ed time than resource time. And when they hit middle school, there was this off-ramp into this alternate replacement classes. Well, where's the on-ramp? So some kids haven't had general education classes for a while. And so they're gonna need a supported class. But if we start right now with our group of incoming sixth graders, that more of them are in limited and then some in supported, I would imagine as we get better at it, those kids won't have to go to support it as much because they will already be successful in learning the content right alongside their gen ed peers.
Well, I'll apologize for asking you to match the energy because I think you matched the.
Okay.
That was probably the most eloquent breakdown of the specialized department that I've seen in my four years here.
Oh, well, thank you.
I, I really appreciate how focused you are on growth and change and meeting our kids' needs as they are on both sides of the aisle. Like I said, Allison, because the, the general education kids needs this just as much as the specialized kids.
That's right. We're all gonna be at the same grocery store together.
Right, 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 together, right?
Yeah.
And then on the grocery store comment, so we, we haven't gone out of the community. Is there any help with job placement beyond just those, those trips?
That is part of Mindy's program that she's working on. And we have been looking at a couple of different options for students that are internships. Um, there's a few places in Wenatchee, actually, that do internships and in. Um, there's a few places in Wenatchee, actually they do internships and in Yakima, but it's like you stay during the week. So we're trying to figure some of those things out. And I actually think we have a meeting tomorrow. You know, Thursday, ten thirty with somebody that's going to talk to us about the program. So we can see for some of our students, how do we get them into a program like that? And then how can we support them? Because we do need something and it's interesting because Nick and I were having a conversation about. An adult in our community with a disability that is trying to get an internship, right? And then we're like, well, they can't do what. What they applied for, but what could we get them? Because it's hard for us as our department to go. We can't support you. Like we have to, we have, we, we were like, no, 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 that's not what we want to do. That doesn't feel good. So um. Really working at those. And I will say the transition plans, that's been a focus this year also. Um, in that we, when our students enter high school, we start talking about transition plans and what the end of school looks like. And our, our region, our state is low for our students that leave. Um, special education and two years later we do, um, you know, we call them up and say, what has your student done? And we have a lot of students that have not engaged in work or schooling after two years. It's not just Quincy, it is across the state. It is our ESD. And I think it's harder in like our area than like if you were in Seattle where there's a million resources on every corner. Um, but we know that our transition plans have to get better so that we are really looking at how can we better support students. And Ms. Burns is. Excited to do that. I will say she stood up here. You probably have no idea. She just finished her degree in December. He'd been subbing for us, but she's phenomenal and she sees the need for that and wants those kids out in the community and do it as much as possible.
And transportation must be an issue.
Uh, you mean to get them to an out of area placement? That's part of the discussion that I will be having. Yeah. I mean, it would be really hard if we're doing it for one student. But if I could get several students, then I think it would, it would be easier. Yeah. And then, you know, we have. We have neighboring districts, like Soap Lake has a student with a vision impairment. And last year I offered that if they could get their student to Quincy, we could take them the rest of the way to go to something, right? Cause we're trying, we're already taking kids. We were trying to do stuff like that. And I think. If we look at our small communities around us and we're like, you have one and you have one and I have four and how many can we get? That's a good way to look at that and see if you can support kids.
Yeah.
And, and we, we have, we hired one student out of the program here in Francisco District to work in food service and. Three or four years ago, they were our classified um employee of the year because they didn't work so hard. They're there every day. Amazing work ethic, um, really brightens up the, that little school kitchen. So, you know, we do put our, our, we need to do a better job. But when we can't hire out of the program, we have to really work a little here in the district as well.
Yeah, yeah. I think that, I mean, that is all, that's our goal, right?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right, next change.
You know, as, as you heard, we have some light conferences going on right now. So every student in our district will be engaging in a. Conference with their teacher to review their data and their growth over this, this school year. So just really appreciate how serious our, our students put into it. And our teachers work so hard to get the kids prepped, um, to share their goals with their families and to celebrate the growth that they've made. Um, we have confirmed also that second SRO will be starting at the high school um after spring break. So we haven't been able to bring all the second SRO, due staffing shortages, so it wasn't starting after spring break. Um, Officer Stump, we will also have a K nine accompanying him, which will be pretty exciting to have. Uh, Trang K nine, um, he specializes in uh, in detecting drugs, um, yeah, Quincy High School. Um, and then about two of the other schools as well. Uh, spring sports again are well underway and we have a seventy-four degree day to day. It was absolutely gorgeous. Um. Again, it was, not that I don't love coming to these, but it was hard to leave the baseball field. Here, uh, kids look like they're having a, a great time. And this is the furthest we've made it in, man, probably ten years without a snow day. I'll say it. I'm going to call it. Last day of school will be June eleventh. Um, which speaking to eleventh, they will be here before we know it. We, when we come back from spring day, we'll have only forty-seven days of school left. We've already started our fourth quarter. So we've had a, a, a great school year. We're really looking forward to finishing it strong. Um, DL will be closed uh for spring break to the public, but they'll still be here. I'm going to take a week off to spend some time with my family. And uh, so you will not get a board update this Friday or next. The next one you'll get from me is the eleventh of, of eight. So that's my report.
Awesome. Thanks, sir. Um, for board leadership, I said I'd keep everybody updated on the WIA movement. The only update tonight.
I got your back.
Uh, so what's going on in high school? A conference is going on, so this whole week is just half days. Um, next week is spring break. So, you know, many kids are excited for that. Um, there's a boy soccer game going on right now. So, yeah, really exciting. Um. Prom is still being decided between Moses and Quincy and I'm not sure what the theme is still. I think they're still deciding that as well.
What do you mean, where it'll be?
Uh, no, um, prom's still being decided between Moses and Quincy.
Like it'll be hosted in Moses Lake or Quincy.
Yeah. And then also the theme is of still being chosen. And then there's only twelve more weeks of school, so. Who's counting?
Kim, your, your blood's next on the board mission. So, uh, the, the only update on the WIA thing is that the superintendent of public construction. Has sent letters to all of the board members from the WIA referencing what's currently state law and advising them that if they make any changes or. Adopt the proposed amendments, it may be in violation of state law. There's additional nonstop changes at federal level above us, including me sending in a letter um requesting that the feds look over it. Moses Lake now, I believe, has sent a letter. I think there's some other uh districts in the process of sending this letter. Yeah, thank you. Looking for um clarification between the federal and state roles. Uh, but yeah, let's, let's give the board leadership. Well, thank you, everybody who provided updates tonight or uh reports onto policy review and adoption. We have a second reading.
So we have first.
Yeah, we have first reading, I'm sorry.
Procedures to review. And then there are the one leak gap in there inadvertently. It must have been this afternoon. Uh, but Sean will project for the second.
And actually, if you reload your.
For the first reading, I just had a quick question for. Policy procedure thirty-one twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yes, the page is, oh yeah, page four. Um. Kind of in the middle there, it's talking about like the types of intervention and services students would be receiving. Um. And to me, the way I read it, it seems like a significant shift from the type of. Um, outreach we can do, not that I think it's wrong or anything, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand that. Where outreach and re-engagement for students, it's very specific to just those who have unenrolled due to non-attendance and there's no evidence, right? So that would remove, I'm assuming like home visits or like other things. It would truly just be home visits and outreach to those who are un-enrolling or have non-attendance. Is that accurate?
Is that the first?
It's the last.
The last bullet point on the screen.
Provide outreach and re-engagement for students who then will do the.
Yeah, because if you see like a few above that provide outreach from a student, the ones that, that's crossed out. That one to me then covers like just other types of home visits. The, the rewritten version. To me would say then no more home visits. Only if they have unenrolled due to non-attendance. Is that accurate in my understanding of what's been rewritten?
The way I'm, the way I read it is if they have, you know, if they have unenrolled again due to that non-attendance. And we just haven't seen them show up in any other, we haven't gotten requests for records. Cause what, what generally happens if a student unenrolls, um, it triggers a request for record, records and it happens. So you were fairly quick, um, and then we don't get that request. Yes, we do, we will do outreach.
So if a student doesn't attend for twenty days, we can't count them for state count. So we have to drop them, but that automatically triggers. The follow-up through um, uh, petition to Grand County Juvenile Court. Um, we typically try to get a home visit in there to see if we can locate them between. Um, and then it uh triggers a uh participation in CEV if we, uh, sorry, Community Engagement Board, the like. New name for truancy board, if we can find them.
Yeah, right.
To have them come.
To real quickly to make sure to clarify what I'm saying. So the second point, the one that's crossed out, that one included language for like. We're concerned about like basic needs about a student. We're going to go do outreach and do home visits. The way it's now been removed. That means home visits are now limited only to those who have been unenrolled due to non-attendance because it's been crossed out.
And the reason why is only if they are enrolled because if they're still enrolled with us, they're in the truancy process. That's called a scrap. Yeah, so that would fall under, you know, the, the whole engagement board, they're back to, or if we have to take them. This is really if. It's not attendance, we haven't heard from them. And by the way, an office hasn't put in, another school hasn't requested the records. So then we need to provide some outreach to figure out where that kid is.
And that makes sense. So does this settle, maybe there's another policy or procedure that will. Give that freedom to the staff who do outreach, who do home visits? Or is this the only place maybe where it's located?
We do have a home visit.
Yeah, and it does also, that's not what's, it's not being limited here.
Like the categories and it makes sense to change. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't unintended consequences.
No, 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 no. In fact, I think this opens it a little bit more to make sure that we're not losing any kids that aren't in the system for attendance.
So that was the only question for all the first readings.
And I need some, some updates and then thank you for incorporating the ones that made sense and keeping the. Um, the notifications to parents.
Yeah, I think that's important. Just for the record, if, if. If families are signed up in our student information system, no matter what, excuse or unexcused. Emails go out at four o'clock, um, I, I get them, you know. I have one middle school daughter who loves uh not getting called sometimes. So I get a regular four o'clock email saying that she has been tardy. Um, and then if for any of you that's excused or unexcused, it will say excuse medical. Um, excuse personal appointment. Um, I get that notification four o'clock in my inbox, um, because I'm the primary uh guardian of our Skyward account.
There was another piece that we do need to discuss here, which is on page six.
Which one?
Page six. Same, same procedure, correct. Okay. And so there was a comment before, I think it was from Casey that who had emailed, um. So on page six, number three, after seventh unexcused absence in a month, he thought it could be rolled into number four.
Sorry, there was. It's a lot, it's a lot of the same language.
Correct.
And the seventh thing, it's a little confusing after the seventh unexcused absence, but not later than.
Right. It's kind of in, in between actually in talking and speaking with uh. Going through this, I think we could either move it up to number two because number two also says that it's the. Um, under the heading between second and seventh. So we can move that into that section if you guys would like, or we can move it down into the fourth. Because it was.
Either way, because a lot of that is covered in the boards as well.
Yeah, so it seems redundant. And I put a, a call into legal to see which way. Uh, like what their thoughts were on it and hadn't heard back, but I mean, we can decide on our own. We could just eliminate number three and add it into number two if you'd like. Or we put it into number four. Either way, it's still the same language. Yeah. It would just be four bad really.
Yeah. Whatever makes most sense. Yeah. I appreciate the brevity and clarity of removing any unnecessary rubbish.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
For the future showing of that one, if there is, we need a different one so we can see them.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Then I'd say that, you know, be in favor of approving this, but at the same time, and maybe this goes into the future topics, but. It'd be good to get a work session put together with various admin and teachers to really discuss. Their thoughts on what we're going to strengthen attendance policies. Um.
Yeah.
And, and make attendance better in the district.
Sure.
I'd agree. Do we have any questions on the other two procedures before?
I guess I got one more thing too. It can be part of that. Um, but looking into, you know, we, I know we discussed this Nick, but looking into. Some type of temporary online learning options for extended excused absences. The teachers can take advantage of trying that.
Okay, and then uh for review and adoption. The second reading. Any questions on any of the policies under the, for the policy procedure under this?
I have a question, um. On the policy, page two, that first bullet, um. I know when I was looking at the header, it's, it's under the rights and responsibilities and the district's commitment. It seems like it's added language from the WASA model policy. And it seems a little redundant because following that bullet section, it will talk about how obviously we. Will rightly discriminate. So I would just propose to eliminate that fully. It seems redundant.
That is seeking to disrupt.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can do that.
Are you guys agree?
Yeah, it's again, it's just extra redundant rubbish.
So with that edit, yeah, we can. Make motion to approve that edit.
I'm going to approve board policy number thirty-two forty-one. With the edit of. Top bullet point on page two.
Set aside.
Okay, we have a move in a second. All those in favor, stay on.
Aye.
Aye. Right, we've approved policy thirty-two forty-one and procedure thirty-two forty-one.
The procedure? What? Last night I just went working on my math, now I can't find it. Cause when I was on a procedure. Um. It was on a comment.
On, on thirty-two.
Um, I'm sure we're going to find it. It was just one of the comments from the legal. Maybe it wasn't much.
I don't know.
That would have been. That's good. We can bring back the second, for sure. That would have been the attendance.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay.
Do we have no unfinished business, new business? Do we want to? Add, uh, or I guess we could add Casey's idea to the request for future topics or maybe.
Talk about that.
Any other new business to cover before we?
I want to find out if we could, uh. I listened to a website talking about. What our governor's decided as far as parental. Um.
Abilities.
Abilities. And he's pretty much decided to just erase. Our.
Well, the legis, the truth has two sides.
And, um. If there's any way that we could. Take part in the action of voicing a terrible. I mean, all of us have kids except they are, would you like to have them tell you how to raise your child?
No.
Okay. Shannon.
That's not the point.
Yeah, but uh, um, this is, it was an initiative from the, the people. There's, my understanding is there's going to be another initiative to try to roll back any changes that they do make, but. Uh, our role is to advocate for the students in our district. I don't think necessarily to. Advocate outwardly.
But I thought, you know, we work for the parents or the community.
Certainly, and we can keep the, the community advised of what's going on. And then I think it's, it's their, it's the community's job to vote. And, and be vocal for themselves.
Do we keep who is advised, state guilty?
We don't have to, but we certainly can. We can add that to our, our leadership reports and.
I'll add the.
Not really. Um. Like, Chad was saying, it's, it, yeah, there's changes in me, but the fluidity, but it all, it's all going to get back up again anyways. I guess in my, in my, my theory is, is I, I'm not cowering out of wanting to protect our kids and our parents who arrive at absolute one hundred percent of anybody's trust. But I, as I see it.
But I, as I see it for us here in Quincy, is it's not affecting us now. And I really just wanna focus on teaching kids, educate. And so, uh, let there was a law or a rule or a policy, yeah, down the road, yes, we're gonna worry about it. But because of the fluidity and the constant changes. Why draw attention to something that is truly not impacting the trade? And I just wanna teach kids.
So you wanna wait until it impact?
No, not necessarily.
Well, that's.
I, I get them, I get them saying, I get them saying, I'm watching, I'm watching it. We're watching it very closely. Because we're not only, not only do we wanna wait until there's a big blow up for something happen, but at the same time too, the liabilities that don't need to be drawn attention to our district. It's like, I, I, for me as a legislative representative, I'm outweighing constantly daily, I'm outweighing the, okay, do we go in spotlight with cost drama and, and potential legal actions? Over something that truly not even affecting our students right now. No, I would rather.
And, and with the bill of rights, I think once the dust settles, you know, we can maybe, once it gets, you know, I, I have no idea where it's going. Um, it's getting battled around and I think it's something that's gonna go into May, to be honest. I think it's gonna probably use as a political bond.
Look where it's already at.
But I, I, I don't know because it's changed, but well, this one I'm suggesting.
I'm talking about our own policies where we can let a kid at thirteen years old write himself an excuse and leave the school grounds. Yes, without the parents being notified.
So what I, what I was suggesting.
Something happens to that child. Whose liability is that?
As long as we're following Washington state law, um, that would not be our legal area. And I, I understand that, the, I understand that. You know.
You're not wrong.
And I don't wanna make it sound like we're just brushing the son of a rug either because. Y- yes, well, of course this is concerning. I don't want my kids to have that. But it's a fine line of, of who. Actually, he just turned fourteen, thank you. But, um, it's, it's. It's, it's just a really fine line and, and, and it takes a lot of discernment to decide, okay, sure, yeah, we can make a public statement. As far as the board goes and, and say this is where we stand ethically as a board and put that out to the public. But that doesn't make any difference on what we can do for our policies and procedures to, to reflect that.
We still have to follow.
We still have to follow what.
I understand that.
And while, and while.
How does that change?
That's, that's not.
I believe then the community gets involved. Because a lot of them aren't aware.
Absolutely. Then that is on them.
Yeah.
My job is to teach, our job is to make sure our children are getting educated.
I understand.
We want this.
The example would be what we've seen come out of Moses Lake and, and it'll be interesting to see what happens going forward with the reaction from state government.
Well, and I'm watching me too, because that's the one that actually wrote a letter to the federal side. And if I see that they get a, a support on a federal level, okay, now I'm interested. Because I don't wanna jump into something and dangle out there financially in liability towards the district. And go, okay, do we have anything that's gonna come back? What's the point of doing that? When we just really need to educate kids?
But I, I also, you know, think, you know, we have, you know, you're interested in what is the parent bill rights? What does that even gonna look like? What does that mean for us? You know, that will have some implications for us. So once that dust settles, I think that could be a really good work session. That we could kinda go point by point in that parent bill rights. Once the dust settles, what does that really mean in the Quincy School District? And I think once, once you see everything on the table, I, you know, kind of Shannon's saying, we're following all of them. You know, it, it's, that doesn't, you know, we, we do not wanna parent. In the Quincy School District. I have four children in my home. I can barely parent. So I do not wanna parent thirty-two hundred children. Um, I trust our parents. I believe in our parents. Um, and I think it would be an opportunity, once that dust does settle, what does it really mean here in Quincy? Until that dust settles, we really, we're just living in speculation. And when we live in speculation, in my opinion. That leads to people going to extremes on, on any side. So I really wanna know what, when the rubber hits the road, what does it mean for Quincy kids? I think we can do that.
And thought we'd work around it once it's set.
Yep.
And then really, we have no idea what the governor's opinion of it is. And he will not play any cards until he absolutely has to. So there is, so you could, they put something to him and he can veto it.
I don't really wanna play any cards.
And the thirteen has been around for, I don't know. It's, it's hard. It's hard to be a parent and get told you can't get, you can't get mental health services for your students because they're thirteen and they can make up their own mind on that. But it's been around for a long time and it's not like this has just happened. So. The Bill of Rights is happening, but it, that part has been around and kids have had a lot of rights at thirteen.
And I think the board, the, the direction that we took with the, the, the procedure, I think that's, you know, it, it reflects current practice.
But yeah, don't get us wrong, as a board, I don't think any of us want school to do with parenting. Uh, but I've not seen that in our district. Our district is not out there to try and take all the parenting of any student. It's not sort of a problem.
All right, if there's no further comment, we'll call this session adjourned.